Ladies and to the pride, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and ever-living, lasting God presides over all things of heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Belishko is excused. Mrs. McClay?
Present.
Mr. Maron?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Also in attendance is Mayor George Brown, Controller Tony Thomas, Administrator Charles McCormick, City Attorney Tim Henry, Assistant City Clerk Tracy Smith, and Administrative Assistant Lisa Semperlin. Good evening, welcome to tonight's regular session of council. Please turn off all cell phones. Following our examples of some important council rules, they are not intended to be a complete list. Please adhere as closely as possible to the five-minute speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail, except the speaker at the dais who has the floor. The chairperson shall preserve order and decorum and prevent attacks on personalities. Chairperson shall determine all points of order. No persons except city officers or their representatives shall be permitted within the rail during any meeting without the express permission of the council. Council kindly asks that the public please vacate the building within 10 minutes after the meeting adjourns. And finally, when members of the administration are speaking, please stand up and speak into the microphone.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on pending legislation?
Angel Mathis, Wilkes-Barre. For the authorizing the forgiveness of parcels transferring to Wyoming Valley Habitat for Humanity, that is such a good cause. But my question is with the fire pumper. Now, is that all coming out of the budget, or is there a matching fund to it?
That's in reference to the fire engine? You want to know where the funding is coming from?
Yes.
If you would like to.
Yeah, Angel, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you were saying.
The funding, is it fully funded, or is it partially granted, fully, or are we fully paying for it?
Yeah, how are we paying?
How are we paying for it?
For what?
For the fire truck.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, we're looking at, and I'll be coming before council to get approval of short-term lease agreement. And then we have revenue that's coming in certain times this year. As that revenue comes in, we'll pay the lease off. So whatever interest we pay will be short-term lease interest. But we do have identified some revenue sources that we know are coming in. The main thing is, Angel, that we need this fire truck.
Oh, I know we need it. I just wanted to know how it was going to be paid for.
This is the best way economically and financially to be fiscally responsible for the city, is to do it this way. And that way, that truck will be on the assembly line shortly. We'll get it around September, October.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Troy?
Yeah, Mayor, would that be a lease? I understood that was a lease purchase agreement on that fire engine? I wonder, are we sure, is the city sure that it's not being sold a bill of goods here? I mean, is this, okay, it's a CoStar's vendor, but that's a lot of money. Look, I know Chief Delaney and you people are probably think that this is a more efficient way to combat fires or potential fires. But years ago, we had Tom Layton as mayor. He closed, under protest from several citizens such as me, certain firehouses, which I think raised our insurance rates, because the firehouse was no longer in a close proximity, the firehouse was not in close proximity to my house. The one up the heights I'm referring to specifically on North Hampton Street was closed. There was one closed over here in the East End. So my question is, are you convinced, and is council convinced, before you vote for this? I know you raised a question on this the other night of some kind, whether this was a lease purchase agreement?
Same question Jesus.
And it's just, you know, it's a lot of money, which the question, it comes down to a cost-benefit agreement, doesn't it, Mayor? Whenever you purchase something, especially of this magnitude and its price range, is the benefit worth the cost? So can you prove that? I mean, that we're not, that the city's not being sold a bill of goods? I mean, I'm sure you could, but at least attempt to. The other comments I have here, as usual, I'm opposed to the suspension of the code of ordinances regarding the consumption of alcoholic beverages for the fine arts fiesta. I know that's a terrific program, it's a terrific event. I don't see why alcoholic beverages are necessary. Is this going to make them more money, the committee? It's going to make the city more money, the vendors more money? Just to allow people to drink more? I don't think that's, to drink something, I don't think that's necessary. And I think it's ridiculous to have an ordinance which is consistently suspended every time there's an event down on Public Square, doesn't matter what it is, or on Kirby Park, Cherry Blossom Festival, whatever, July Fourth Festival. This is, the ordinance is always suspended, so what good is the ordinance? A couple other comments that I have. Look, I'm not a total deconstructionist. I mean, I think the idea, I don't know how often this is done before, but the transferring of the properties to the Habitat for Humanity, I think is a great thing. And hopefully, those homes will be restored and given, and sold to, you know, an affordable price to people who can, who are struggling, and who want to live the American dream of owning their own home. Makes it possible, feasible, right? Well, it's a good thing. So can the same thing be said about, okay, I'm sure you're going to refute this point, demolition of this property on 67 Prospect? Hey, I snuck, you snuck more time in for me there, right? Lisa, I'd appreciate that.
At least 30 seconds.
I assume the process, I know Mr. McCormick wants to explain this, when there's a property that's dilapidated, so the city must get legal clearance, right, that goes through you, Tim, to acquire this property, by eminent domain, I guess? I mean, I'm in the dark on that, if you want to enlighten us, that's fine. But the question is, and I assume that that was a low-viter SRI, to tear that down, but is this property sold beyond, I mean, couldn't this property also be turned over to Habitat for Humanity, for the possibilities of restoration? Or is it in that deplorable, maybe it is in that deplorable of a condition, I mean, maybe you judge it to be so, but if there, does it always have to be a property when the city goes through this procedure, that it's got to be torn down? I mean, if there's a possibility of salvaging it and possibly building something there, wouldn't that be better to explore? I wonder also about the, I guess that's pretty much all I had, but I was looking over the awarding of the Franchelli, who seems to get a lot of contracts with the city, and this has been going on for a long time. Call service, is that for the breakdown of city vehicles, flat $100 per hour? And was this put out, was there an RFI, RFP, I mean, put out for this? Because Franchelli, I've got nothing against Franchelli, but they seem to do a lot of, they have done a lot of business here with the city for I don't know how many years. And $100 an hour, and it may seem like a fair price, but it's still pretty steep. And that covers pretty much about it, except for the two appointments to the, one, the Police Civil Service Commission, the zoning hearing board. As I said, I think these people should be present and offer some, some sort of credentials, some sort of, as they call in Latin, bona fides, to prove that they're capable, and we all know that they're willing to serve, or they wouldn't be being reappointed. But what are the qualifications for these positions? And do these people meet these qualifications? That seems to be overlooked. That's all I have, but I appreciate some comments.
Certainly didn't miss much, though. Mayor?
Yeah, Sam, the fire truck at $850,000 is actually a deal, and I'll tell you why.
It's a bargain?
It's a very good price for that truck, and I'll tell you why, Sam.
Oh.
They're in demand all over the country because of the COVID situation. There's a two-year waiting period, in some cases, for certain fire trucks. We were able to secure this truck that's going to be going on to the assembly line shortly. It'll be finished around October, September, and it's going to cost $850,000. There's another city, and we went through this on Tuesday night. Chief Delaney was here and explained the whole system of why we chose this and at this time. The same truck that's going to come off the line next year is 1.2 million. So we got it at the best possible price, and the reason we got that price is because we're getting it now, and it's on the assembly line. It's going to go up. So yeah, it was a good deal. Chief Delaney was instrumental in this, in securing it. Also, he has 17 firefighters that are helping to design the upgrades to that, that fire truck. So anyway, a lot of work went into this, and it is the best deal we could get. And for $850,000 versus 1.2, yeah, it's a good deal.
Can I ask a question, or no? I just wondered, what are the advantages of this truck compared to the equipment that the city has? Does it have a lot more capabilities, or?
No, the city, some of the fire engines are in need of repair, they've put so much time on them. At one time, we had three fire engines in the shop at the same time. So we were using an old truck to help subsidize the fighting of fires with the other trucks that were left. And one of those trucks was a 1991 fire truck I bought for $44,000, for $7,000. We have to upgrade our fleet of fire engines, and this is the best way to do that. So with Chief Delaney's expertise in this, we're going to lead. But yes, we have to upgrade with the fires we've had. We had a lot of fires lately, and they're getting a lot of years. And we want the best equipment for our firefighters, just like we want the best equipment for our police officers. As far as the people that were going to be appointed tonight, they were here on Tuesday, they were here present, they were here to answer questions from council, and any questions that were put to them were answered on Tuesday night, very well-qualified people.
Thank you.
You brought up the wine. The event on the square, this is an annual event, we've never had any issues with it that I'm aware of.
My understanding, and I could be wrong, I thought it was done for, so people could taste wine, sample wine before they were.
Yeah.
I didn't think there was anything. Selling wine, like glasses.
Yeah, no tables or anything there.
Very small, and these are local vendors that produce wine, they're local businesses, and very small amount, but again, it just needs to be addressed through our ordinance, so it's very small event, nothing to be concerned about.
And Sam, related to the demolition of Prospect Street, we don't require ownership of that before we demolish it. We don't go in through eminent domain or anything like that. If we notice or inform that a property's in bad shape, we'll send a structural engineer out to the property, he'll issue a report, and if that report concludes that the best option for that property, for the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood, is demolition, you know, then we will take the steps necessary to, you know, start the process to take it down. But it remains privately owned by whoever the owner is when we take it down, and we'll lien the property for the cost of the demolition, but we don't require ownership of it.
You build the property owner for the demolition then, right?
We file a lien against the property.
Lea?
Right.
Thank you. Anyone else on pending legislation?
Okay, so now we'll do the consent agenda, which is the 107, I believe, resolutions in the minutes. We need a motion and a second.
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Maron.
Second.
By Mrs. McClay. Mrs. McClay?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
And we have one ordinance for first reading, which is File of Council 1 of 2024 regarding the pave cuts. We need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Brooks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Mrs. McClay?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
That's all the business that we have.
Mrs. McClay, anything since Tuesday?
I don't have any, well, nothing new, but I do want to follow up. So a few years ago, there was task force that you would go out to the, you know, each community, each section. Is that something we are going to consider again? You know, with code enforcement, parking enforcement, maybe pick a day to just kind of go around the neighborhoods? Or is that not something, was it valuable or not valuable? And would it be something we would consider again, maybe?
We would take it to the streets with?
Yeah, I know, like, the council members went around, I believe the mayor was there, and then code enforcement, parking, just to kind of.
Yeah, I remember that.
Walking the city streets and getting a little more of a view.
We have not planned any councilwoman, but the city, you know, the weather just started right now.
Yeah.
So we'll see if that's something we want to do, but there's nothing in the plan for it.
Okay.
But we're always open to your suggestions.
Thank you.
I think she said that was it.
That was it, okay. Mr. Maron?
Yeah, well, now that the weather's breaking, I had a few complaints about the boat launch at Nesbit Park. The boaters, they're having a hard time pulling their trailers in and out because there's some designated spots where the, just for trailers, and regular cars are parking there, and so they're having a hard time to navigate in and out of those spots. Maybe we can get a sign.
Okay.
Yeah, we said if they tell you a problem, we have to keep going on it, making sure that people do not park there, so we'll.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that happened last year and before.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, now that the weather's breaking, more people, and I don't want to deter people from not coming there.
We're happy to do.
Okay, thank you. And also, I just want to update on the Empire Stanton Street, the towing company. Past couple meetings, we've been having some complaints, and actually, the owner called me. He's investing in some 200 feet of netting for around the fencing, and he promises he's going to start cleaning that area up because he knows it's a nuisance, he feels pretty bad about it. Okay? And that's about it for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
I sent everything to Charlie, he's fine.
My only comment has to do with the Carlisle Street investigation, that the police did such an outstanding job. I'm really very proud of all of them, and I know this one of the guys is out there that stepped out, but obviously, I'm a little partial, but I think they are the best, and I just want to give them credit. They pulled that together so quickly, and our department, along with all the other agencies that assisted, and especially the district attorney's office, have pulled that all together in the package with five homicide suspects, and were able to put that all together in that amount of time. Very commendable. And I'm sure there's more to come from what I read and hear, but I'm sure that they will, as always, do the exemplary job that they do.
Hats off to them.
Yeah, it's really fantastic. Unfortunate, this is, but I'm just glad that there is some justice moving forward. Angel Mathis?
Angel Mathis, Wilkes-Barre. First, I have to give it to DPW, they've been awesome lately, because I can tell you just from my, with the whole garbage issue, my block has been looking cleaner, and John Zahaski, let me tell you, you know, this morning, when he got to, when he got to my house, the look on his face, but he, you know, they cleaned it up, they really cleaned it up, because I live above a pig, to put it nicely, where it's like 12 contractor bags of trash, needless to say. But they do a really good job when things are right, they do a really good job, and at least for one week so far this year, it was one week where there was no trash on my block. Yeah, that's a big thing. And with the street cleaning, it lasted for a day, and then Trevor Trashed came home. No, I didn't say Trevor or Trash, I said Trail of Trash came home.
Okay.
Because she leaves a trail of trash everywhere she goes. But my only complaint is, I'm not sure whether it's a misprint in the calendar, but the lawn collection, from what I understood, was supposed to start on April 1st, but they have yet to collect.
I've read the same thing, it's at April 1st. I'm not sure, I didn't put any out.
Okay, so I'm just.
Continue your presentation, then we'll address those.
No, that was, that was it, because we're waiting, because my mother sent three cans out the first week, and they're still sitting there.
I thought it was starting on your collection day this week.
Yeah.
They're picking them up this weekend. They're picking them up, oh. And your collection day is?
Her collection day is Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yes.
I know they're picking them up today, I know.
They're picking them today?
There were two problems.
Sometimes they run a day late with that, but hopefully they get it soon.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad to hear things are cleaned up there, that's great.
No, no.
It's unfortunate that you have to do that.
No, it'll be some more cans out by the, by Tuesday.
Lynda Joseph?
Lynda Joseph Wilkes-Barre. Just a few updates from last meeting on actually issues that Councilman Brooks had brought up. I was going to ask about South Empire and Moya Allen, so that's great to hear, that there's going to be a rectified situation there. Also, Stanton and Hazel Street with the auto car repair tire place. I passed there last night after closing. It looked better than it ever has, there was only two cars on the property. Now I just passed, and there's a lot, but they're working. So if somebody had gone up and told them, it worked. So hopefully, that will hold. The other thing that he had brought up was the cars on the sidewalk on Hazel Street across from Paris Mart, they are now parking on the street, they are not on the sidewalk, so that's taken care of. And the only other thing was about the banners on the sidewalks that are all over, the big high banners that flap in the wind, and I don't know if Tim had a chance to find the ordinance, but I did, I looked it up, and just for your information.
Watch out, Tim. Move over.
Move over. I've got a satellite office down here.
Because actually, about six years ago, I was working in the 400 block of Hazel Street, and that's when they first started to appear, and I called down, and they sent code, and code went over and told them, these are illegal, you can't have them, and they took them down. Well, now, of course, there's so many more. But it is 26-196, Article 6, and it's under Streets and Sidewalks.
She had that memorized.
That's where it is. And it basically says, erect or place any stand, stall, booth, or showcase vending machine, trash receptacle, banner, and awning, and it goes on and on, it says, on any, in any manner projecting over or upon any portion of any of the streets, sidewalks, lanes, alleys, pavements, footways. So it's all in there that, I think that was probably the one that they followed the last time, so, but yeah, that's it. So thank you for all the accomplishments that we got. Thank you, Councilmember Brooks.
I'll tell you what, Tony, since you brought it up Tuesday, like, now that I'm thinking about it, when I'm driving around, there is a lot.
Now you're seeing them all the time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments? Thank you. Sam Troy?
I'm hitting cleanup again, I guess. I have a few questions and comments on one aspect of the revenue section of the budget, which I think is pretty critical. I was talking to Mr. Thomas before about this, and it's just my belief personally, you know, I'm kind of a, I'd say, almost a full-fledged taxpayer advocate, I maybe, I shouldn't label myself that, but I'm concerned when taxpayers and the average citizen are getting ripped off. And this budget was passed, what, last October before you came on? And you weren't on it either, right? And nobody ever asked, very seldom, I don't think Mr. Brooks or anybody asked any questions, and I did raise the issue, I would still like to know, which I think is a scam, this stormwater fee, the WVSA. There's several issues that we should be concerned with. I say we, because council and the mayor have a role in this. Mayor, maybe you want to comment on this as to why? And what the nature of this situation is, when, I think I raised this issue before, but I never got any answers, so I'm going to raise it again. Regarding the, if I could find it here, the revenue from the WVSA that goes directly to the city, it has been increased substantially from, I believe, two, I can't find it here, but I think it's 200, oh, here it is. Financial Administration, Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority, this is page three, I guess, of the revenue section of the budget. $277,000 in 2023. This year, $325,000. Now, that's a raise of about $50,000 approximately, revenue coming from the WVSA. Can you comment on that, Mr. Brooks? What is the basis of that? As far as I understand, I talked to the executive director of the WVSA, and he said there's a certain amount of revenue that is, that is given to each municipality, just given. This is not for repairs of sewers or catch basins or anything like that. That's a separate deal. As far as I understand it, I mean, if you can explain this away, rationalize it, then fine. But my point is, if you, if you guys are getting, if, Mayor, if you're getting an extra $50,000 into the budget here, why do we have to pay a sewer bill of $50 a year? I mean, are you going to go into the same explanation that we, you know, that why does each individual homeowner have to pay additionally? If you guys are getting this kind of revenue from the WVSA, we're, plus, we're paying a stormwater fee and a connection for sanitation, which amounts, my bill is $67 a quarter, that's pretty steep, and a lot of people are struggling. I just wonder why, if somebody could provide me with some answers, because if that's, if that is anticipated, that anticipated revenue of $50,000, that's a lot of money. So why should, why should we have to pay a sewer fee? Why, it can't, we start, as I keep advocating, with this kind of increase here, maybe take some of this money, and whatever ARP money is left, which I'm, Mr. McCormick still doesn't know, and some of you people don't know, what is, what is the residual amount of the ARP money? Can we salvage some of that money and put it towards a worthwhile program? And the mayor had initiated once, which was the home renovation program, where people can renovate their houses and get reimbursed to a certain amount. That ended before the COVID ended, but I thought that was a great program. Can't we use some of that ARP money that's left? Maybe, you know how much is left, Mayor, towards that kind of a program, or to establish what I keep advocating, a taxpayer relief fund? This $50,000 maybe perhaps could be a good start for people, financially struggling people to draw on, so they could restore, so they could, you know, pay their bills. But there's something very disturbing about this whole situation, and I'm going to have to, unless I get satisfactory answers, I'm, I'm talking about the WVSA, and the dynamic between the WVSA and each municipality. I raised this issue before, Mr. Thomas, it's about time, now, we've had this, and I think everybody has a stake in this, the tax, because we're all paying it, the city's getting this kind of revenue, the city is paying, as far as I understand, a certain amount of money to the WVSA in return for its own structures, the impervious runoff, impervious runoff, certain amount of money goes back to the WVSA, I guess, but I didn't see that in the expenditure section. So I'm, we have to find answers here, guys, and I think it only, you know, this, this thing, from the WVSA angle, seems like to me a scam. I'm sorry to sound so cynical, but we're paying a lot of money, and what is the end line? What is the objective of this? This thing has been placed for, I don't know how many years, have we made any progress on cleaning up the Susquehanna? Can we see an end to this, this tax, this stormwater fee? All right, I guess my time's up, and I know Lisa's watching the clock.
No, sorry.
I mean, I don't mean to ruffle any feathers, I'm not, it's not saying anybody's guilty of any cover-up or anything, but.
Don't raise your voice. You're outraged, don't raise your voice, because you're using words.
What's that, Charlie? I'm sorry, I only have my hearing aid.
Don't raise your voice, because you are using words that infer some type of improper action. So let me explain it again to you, Sam.
What's that, Charlie?
The city.
Let him explain.
The city, the city has over a million and a quarter of repairs that we do, on an average, on our sewer and water system. The amount that we receive from WVSA is set by a four-page complicated calculation that the federal government requires on them. Your tax, as you want to call it, the rent tax, is set forth through the WVSA by the federal government, not by the city of Wilkes-Barre. Any amount of money that comes in, and we anticipate three and a quarter this year, because that's around what the calculation is, is a reimbursement to the city for amounts that are paid toward allowable expenses, basically sewer and water system repairs. So if you think that's an additional amount of revenue, we're just reimbursing some of our expenses. And our expenses are gigantic. I'll give you one very quick one, since everyone knows about it. The Blackman Street disruption. We'll send it off to them, and then when those funds come in, we know where to put it in the budget line. Because otherwise, you would just have money coming in without having really any idea of where to, where to put it and where it came from, if that makes sense. Like, there's, we have all these different budget lines who are reasoned, so we know where revenue is coming in and where things are coming out. Otherwise, you would just have, it would all look like it's coming from the same place. So it's expected revenue, and as Charlie pointed out, we certainly do have some really old infrastructure in this city. I believe earlier this year, we already had some American Water Plan, some streets for some upgrades, so it's not coming out of nowhere, in other words.
But all that money, that $377,000, whatever it is, that's all for repairs then? That's all for maintenance? Or is that?
It's all for allowable expenses.
The sum of it is, goes into the general treasury? We don't use it all, correct?
Just today, let me give an example today. There was a sewer break in Parsons Park that was reported. Some of these sewer lines, they found one that wasn't even on the maps, was so old, wasn't even on the map, running through the park, and our guys obviously can't repair it. The city called in a utility contractor, and with the help of WVSA, who was on scene also, they were able to determine where the break was and had to do a major exchange in there to repair it. Now, that's an expense that's on us. It's on city property, no one else. It's our responsibility, it's our expense. But when you have to bring in an outside utility contractor as well, it's not something our guy, our guys are not capable of repairing. So every time we have these incidents, it's an outside contractor that's coming. It's not something that our DPW is going to repair. And these expenses, as Mr. McCormick said.
But the city does pay for the impervious runoff.
Yeah, that's another story. That's a whole nother issue right there. But we have very antiquated lines, some we don't even know about, and this one happened to rupture. So big expense, and it's constant expense. It's going to always be there. But thank you for bringing our attention. Okay, anything else? Okay, make a motion to adjourn. I'll make the end. Let's get that section down, or?
Yeah. Write that down.